We are set.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to East Orange Board of Supervisors meeting. My name is Ashley DePiero. I like to call the meeting per order, starting with roll call. We start with you, Chief.
Brandon Pasquale, Cooper Police.
Dave Crist, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Kilkenny, Township Solicitor.
Dennis DeSanto, Supervisor.
Emilla Winder, Supervisor.
Joe Givanas, Vice Chairman.
Ashley DePiero, Chairwoman. At this time, I'd like to announce that the board met for an executive session to discuss matters of personnel and engagement. I'd also like to approve the meeting minutes from March 23rd, 2021. If there's no comments from the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Mr. Chris, is there any citizens that want to be heard?
Madam Chairperson, after a review of the email inbox set aside for citizens' comments, there are none at this point in the meeting.
Before we go any further, I apologize. I wanted to send or have a moment of silence, I'm sorry, for James Doherty. James was a resident of East Norton for sixteen years, and he also served on the Township Human Relation Commission. And I'd like to just have a quick moment of silence for him. Thank you. Moving on, comments by the Board of Supervisors. Any comments from the board? I'd like to say a huge thank you to East Norton Pharmacy, and he's starting staff and public works for making the vaccine clinic happen at the old Walmart. It was a huge success. And I'm just very grateful for everybody putting their dedication and commitment into making our community really safe from this pandemic. I really appreciate it, especially you, Mr. Hart, that really helped organize all this. So just thank you so much.
Very welcome. We have a great team, and we are blessed with East Norton Pharmacy and the work they do for our residents and the communities.
Sincerely. Any other comments from the Board of Supervisors? Being there's no old business, we'll move on to new business. East Norton Little League and ENGAA contributions, I'd like to call on Township Manager, Mr. Hart, to review this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you tonight is our yearly action item where we, where the board approves yearly contributions to our Little League partners, Eastern Art and Little League and Eastern Art and Girls Athletic Association. Each year, we, we, there's a calculation that we've done for years, and we donate a certain amount to help with their costs. Tonight, you're authorizing the contribution to the Eastern Art Little League of $3,750, and that's due by participants. So there's almost double the participants in the Little League as there are ENGAA. But for ENGAA, the contribution is $2,250. So they, these organizations, as you know, do a great, great job. They really, they teach the kids. They, they're there for them all year round, raising money, doing all sorts of great things. And sorry, I was getting a, getting a message there. So tonight, before you, are these contributions, and again, we do it every year, and it's before he does not, I know they not only need these funds, but they truly appreciate them, so.
Mr. Givanas?
Are we, are we voting on that? Or not?
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion since you called on me.
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor DeSanto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now, item B. Item B, approval of the municipal digital sign use policy. I'd like to call on our tremendous Finance Director, Dave Crist, to review that policy.
Thank you, Vice Chair Givanas. As you recall, last year, the Board of Supervisors authorized the purchase of a new digital sign to replace the, the old message board that had been on Germantown Pike and Old Sandberg Street for, for many, many years. The new sign has, has turned out to be a very important tool for the township to communicate all the events and activities that have been taking place within the township. And as a result of the popularity, we've received a number of requests from community organizations asking to display messages about their groups or their activities on the sign. And so this led to the development of what you have in front of you, the proposed municipal digital sign use policy. And in essence, the policy is set up to be able to monitor, control, and prioritize use of the digital sign in a fair and non-discriminatory manner for the residents and community organizations of East Norton Township. The policy identifies the Township Manager's Office as the responsible party for managing and approving messages that get displayed on the digital sign. So what we are asking tonight is for board's approval of the municipal digital sign use policy. And if approved, this policy will go up on our website. The community groups will be able to download it or fill it out online and submit it for our review. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have a quick question. When you say residents, can residents put up messages like, can happy birthday to, you know, happy fifth birthday to my son or anything like that?
No, so this is designed specifically for use by community or, community and other nonprofit organizations. By residents, I meant that we've been able to use it as an effective tool to our residents and commuters visiting through the township of all the good things that are going on.
I have a question, Mr. Chris. Do we have any time limit on this? Like, you know, where it's, if there, a nonprofit is going to advertise an event, how often will it be displayed? How many days will it, will it be active until it's taken down?
So in addition to the municipal digital sign use policy, we've developed a digital sign advertising request form. And that's where the group would specify their message, how often they wanted it run, for what period of time, and what type of graphics that they want to be using on it. And based on that form, we'd be able to then identify how it fit into all the other displays that we're using on the message board. So while we would try to accommodate as best as possible, recognize that we do have a number of messages of our own that go up there on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you. And it's an awesome sign, by the way. So it, it, it does get looked at, and it's, I think it'll be good for the nonprofits in the, in the township to advertise their events.
Agreed.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the board? Okay. Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the municipal digital sign policy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
By Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, consideration for approval of security access control system, I'd like to call on Finance Director Dave Crist to review the item.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto. You, you may recall that back in what seems a lifetime ago, back in 2019, the board approved the Brevo Access Control System to be implemented throughout the Township Building to help manage and control building access, both in the administration building and down at the clubhouse recreational facility. And essentially, the system allows us to, to monitor and control access into those buildings, create lockdown scenarios where necessary, and really truly enhance the security of those two facilities. It's worked out very, very well for us, and there was always the intent to extend the use of the system. And as a result of the lobby renovation project and of using this system for the last two years, we've identified a phase two of the system and are asking for permission to, to implement a proposal submitted by ComStar Technologies to add additional door control and security enhancements, both within the Township Administration Building, but then also into the Public Works Building. So if approved, then once completed, we'll have all the appropriate door controls within the administration building on both floors, the clubhouse facility, snack bar, and then out at the Public Works Building. The quote we received from ComStar Technologies was for $34,380, which would add readers and controllers to the following areas: the Chief of Police Office, Deputy Chief of Police, File Room, Patrol Office, Patrol Roll Call Room, Detective Division, the large meeting room upstairs, the new smalling meeting room that was built recently, the large meeting room interior doors, Township Manager Office, Finance Director Office, and Public Works Office. The proposal is available under a Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Agreement from the state, and it is a budgeted line item in this year's 2021 budget. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Being none, I'd like to put this in a formal motion to approve the security access system. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. DeSanto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item D, consideration of, of business privilege tax penalty and interest abatement request. Presidential Caterers of Distinction LLC, I would like to call on our Finance Director, David Crist, again this section.
Thank you, Supervisor Winder.
I think a kid just cheered for you, Dave.
Or for me.
I've got a supporter. Last year during the pandemic, the federal and state government extended tax filing deadlines from April 15th to July 15th. As it turns out, the local tax filing for business privilege tax was not extended. And so we had a number of businesses in the township who filed their taxes late by July 15th, instead of the normal, actually, May 15th in this case, they filed July 15th, assuming that the business privilege tax filing had been, period, had been extended, just like the other taxes. Last year, we did receive a, a number of requests for abatement of penalty and interests. Those requests were approved by the board. Most recently, we received one from the CPA firm of Lawrence F. Tornetta LLC on behalf of their client Presidential Caterers of Distinction LLC. They filed their business privilege tax return on July 14th of last year, received notice apparently late in 2020 or early 2021 that they owed $703 in penalties because as far as Burckheimer and Associates were concerned, the return was filed late, July 5th, 14th, instead of May 15th. So what Presidential Caterers and Lawrence F. Tornetta LLC CPAs are requesting that the township abate those penalty and interest of $703, since they feel that their return was filed in a timely basis, according to the best information they had at the time. And the reason this is coming before the board is that Burckheimer and Associates will only exonerate or abate those penalty and interest, interest if, if directed by the Board of Supervisors. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So again. Chair, I have a question, Madam Chair. If I may. So last year, when people were late for their taxes because of the pandemic, we understood, and, and we we forgave a lot, we kept, we forgave a lot of, of penalties and interest and all that. This seems kind of far removed from that. I guess my question is, at what point are you egregiously late? Like, it's one thing to be a little late. We're, this is April of 21.
Well, and, and if you don't mind, just to be clear, they filed their taxes on July 14th of 2020. But apparently, they didn't receive their penalty notice until late 2020 or early of this year. That's why they're requesting the abatement now.
Okay.
And I may not have explained that well enough early on.
And if I. No, you know, you did. It just, it just feels like they're late to the dance or something. I don't, I don't know else to describe it.
It, it is significantly later than any of the other abatement requests that we've received.
And, and if I could add that, you know, outside of the pandemic, we wouldn't be bringing this to you or any of the, those requests to you. Just because, you know, it's not something we would typically do. We've dealt a little bit with the pandemic and, and, you know, and a variety of, of the handful of businesses that came to us. So we share your concern, and like I said, we bring it to you because, because of the pandemic and to see where, where you'd want to go with it. That's really about it.
I think I hear what Mr. DeSanto is talking about. Like, at what point do we kind of put a stop?
And it's totally discretionary, Dave or Bob, to the board. You can deny this request if you like. You can grant this request. You're in firm legal position to do whatever you want to do. They're asking for extraordinary relief from the board.
Right.
Could you remind me again of what the amount was of relief they're requesting?
They're asking for abatement of penalties and interest in the amount of $703.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Dave, would this open the door to other companies to, to do this? I mean, what, is there a an end to this? I mean, is, is there a certain point where we say, okay, if you didn't do it by now, we're not going to entertain that?
The board expressed that same concern last year when we were, when we were undergoing, going through those five, six, seven, 10 abatement requests that were approved. And to be frank, I, I thought we were, we were beyond all of those. So I was a bit surprised to get this now. As part of the paperwork that they submitted was a a penalty assessment correspondence from Burckheimer Associates dated March 23rd, 2021. Now, I can't say that that was the first time that they received this penalty notice, or whether it's the 27th time they received it. But this was the point in time when they chose to request abatement.
Okay, just, just a comment, Madam Chair, and then I'll, I'll be quiet. I, I think in this case, they, they had good intentions to file on time. They weren't sure that the filing date was pushed back. I'm, I'm inclined to, to allow that and, and to say that, that should, they should be abated from the, the penalties and fees. Because it's been a tough year, and, and it's tough on businesses, and they are one of the oldest businesses in the, in the township, and I think as a courtesy, we should grant them that request.
Any other comments or questions from the board? If none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the abatement request that Presidential Caterers had requested.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to assessment appeal, 1010 Germantown Pike. I'd like to call on Township Solicitor, Mr. Sean Kilkenny, to review this item, please.
Thank you very much, Supervisor DePiero. Just as you have three assessment appeals before you this evening, just so you understand, and I know the board knows, but I want to make sure the public knows. On assessment appeals, the school district, the Norristown Area School District and their law firm, Rudolph Clark, often takes the, the lead because they have the biggest portion of the taxpayer. So they litigate these matters, go to the Board of Assessment at times to the Court of Common Pleas, employ experts such as an appraiser. And then after they come to some kind of settlement and the taxpayer, they forward it, forward it to us. Often, it is not in our financial interest to fight these on our own because we would have to hire our own appraiser, we'd have to hire our own experts, we'd have to send my law firm to go ahead and litigate these matters. So only on rare occasions does the township actively get involved in the litigation of assessment matters. Just wanted to put that disclaimer up front, so the Board of Supervisors understood and the, and the public understands. Now, I will go through. First assessment appeal is for 1010 Germantown Pike. The Board of Supervisors and the public may realize this is a warehouse with multiple office sales used storage on approximately 4.3 acres located on 101012 West Germantown Pike. The Norristown Area School District and the taxpayer have agreed to settle some matter to avoid cost of future litigation. So my office also reviewed the appraisals, both the property owner and the school district, and they came to an agreement where the taxpayer would get back approximately $416.41 a year. This goes back to a 2019 appeal. So for 2019, 2020, and 2021, so that in total would be $1,249.24. So if the Board of Supervisors went ahead and approves this settlement, that's what Mr. Crist would approve a check to go to the taxpayer. So that's the first one, Supervisor DePiero.
And, and Madam Chair, speak for just a second, because I know every time these appeals come up, you know, it, it, it never feels right because you wonder why are they getting, why, why is this happening? So just so you know, we, we all have those same feelings when they come up. I specifically reached out to several municipalities. I spoke to, I met with Mr. Clark specifically, the Solicitor of the School District, as well as several other townships. And although our residential properties, the properties are going through, really, the prices are high, the assessed values, houses are going 10 and 20 and 30% above asking price, they are strong, our residential. But our commercial are really taking a hit, and not just our commercial during, especially during the pandemic. I spoke with Plymouth, and Plymouth has a lot of office spaces, and they are all being reassessed, especially because people are not, businesses are not going back into the office the way they had in the past. So I thought I was going to sort of pick the brain of what everybody else was thinking, and I realized we're all thinking the same thing when it comes to some of our commercial properties. The pandemic and before, with the big box stores being sort of not a thing of the future, they have taken a hit, and this is common just about everywhere. So I wanted to put that out there because I definitely had a strong concern as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the assessment appeal for 1010 Germantown Pike. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor DeSanto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item F, another assessment appeal, RLS REF3/AH Chicago LLC, better known as, I'll steal Mr. Kenny's thunder, the Hyatt House Hotel, who, who, this company owns the property. So I'll pass it on to Mr. Kilkenny to review this assessment appeal.
Sure. Okay, the next assessment appeal, as was summed up by Supervisor Givanas, is for 1010 West Germantown Pike. The property.
The next one.
The next one.
The first one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me pull that up. I apologize. 1044 West Germantown Pike. I was mixing up my Germantown Pike.
Oh, it's not that one.
No, it can be.
Yeah.
It doesn't have an address listed. But it is the Hyatt House.
It is the Hyatt House. Now I have it in front of me. I apologize. Something involves an assessment appeal filed by commercial property owner for a hotel located in the township. The property is the Hyatt House, which sits on a four-acre lot located at 501 East Germantown Pike. So East Norton currently corrects $21,154.71 in taxes on the parcel. So as we mentioned, the school district and the property owner who appealed this matter have come to a settlement. The settlement is as follows. There would be a refund amount of $7,651.69 for the year 2020, and $12,480.93 for the year 2021. Obviously, the hotel industry, the hospitality industry has taken a big hit during COVID, and there have been appeals not only in East Norton Township but other townships in these matters. So that probably reflects that. I'm sure as the economy rebounds, that the school district and perhaps the municipality will go ahead and relook at these assessments to make sure they're accurate to the current economic situation. But right now, this is what's been agreed to from the school district and the taxpayer, and it's a potential motion for your approval, and that roughly $20,000 would be refunded to the taxpayer.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve assessment appeal for LSRF3 dash or slash AH Chicago LLC. Do I have a second for this motion?
I'll second.
And by Mr. Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and our, our last and, and final assessment appeal. Let's see.
That's the 1044.
Yep. Got it right here.
That is J and J Bill flies up on Germantown Pike.
No, no, I was just pulling up my computer. I apologize.
I just gave it a bit.
The property at issue is a three-acre parcel containing 29,968 square feet warehouse. There's been a proposed settlement, Norristown Area School District, and the taxpayer have agreed to settle this matter to avoid the cost of future litigation. They have agreed to increase the assessment to $924,530 effective January 1st, 2021. The new assessment equates to new fair market value of 1 point, of $1,971,971, And there would be a refund to the, to the taxpayer.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the assessment appeal for 1040 West Germantown Pike. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Whose turn is it?
Ms. Winder, Supervisor Winder.
Okay. All right, I thought it was my turn. I practiced this one. Okay, I have each. Bid Award Municipal Complex Roof and Gutter Replacement Project, I'd like to call on Township Manager Bob Hart for this item.
Supervisor Winder. As you know, we have been doing a lot of work, long neglected work on basic township infrastructure. A lot of work has been going on, on the township building and township facilities. One of the major issues we have is a roof that is long out of date. Too many issues to, to, to count. We've done a patch job. We've done everything under the sun at a certain point to get by, but we realized at this point, we have to get it done. We have to take care of home base. We got to get our, our roof done on the township building, as well as a roof done on the. We got to get our our roof done on the township building as well as a roof done on the P, the police garage. We put an RFP out a little over a month ago. We received, well, we we opened the bids just last week and the low bid was ninety two thousand and fifty one dollars. By Vertex Roofing out of Virginia, believe it or not. They came in as the low bid and I think the lowest by probably fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. For new, obviously a new roof, new, not just not just shingles too, it's it's. All the all the plywood underneath, new gutters, new downspouts, an entire system. And it's it's a healthy price, but what's interesting is, and which I've learned recently. The price of lumber has literally gone up eight and tenfold in in certain areas. Something that a a piece of wood that was, you know, seven dollars right now is ninety two dollars. It's it's really insane. But we're we're at a point, we got the best bid we could get for this. It's a ton of work that needs to be done. They're willing to come up and get started quickly. So that's before you tonight for potential approval, ninety two thousand fifty one dollars Vertex Roofing out of Virginia. For full roof gutter and downspout replacement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve the complex roof and gutter replacement project. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Second advice Supervisor DeSanto. All those in favor?
I. I. I.
And carries. Resolution number two eight three three dash five three dash five five Germantown Pike. E-commerce fulfillment center. I'd like to call on Township Manager Mr. Hart to review this resolution, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue before you, the actual item before you is involves, excuse me. Project involves the redevelopment of the Walmart property into an e-commerce retail facility. The project received a special exception from the zoning hearing board last year and land plans were submitted early this year. Plans have been reviewed by the township's professional consultants. The applicant has had meetings with the adjacent Stewart's Keep homeowners in an effort to address their concerns of buffering and and noise. And the planning commission recommended preliminary final approval at their April twenty first meeting. I before you as a preliminary final resolution, which has been prepared for your consideration this evening. Here to present the project and to answer any questions is Rob Lewis of Kaplan Stewart and his project team. Dave, if you could let Mr. Lewis in, he'd be glad to give you a brief presentation to answer any questions you may have on this project.
All right, good evening. Rob Lewis, Kaplan Stewart. I represent fifty three fifty five Germantown Partners LLC, as well as Eli Khan Development Corp. My my clients being the owners and developer of the property. That's the subject of the resolution that's before you for action this evening. I know this project hasn't been in front of the Board of Supervisors yet, but we have actually been at this for a while. So forgive me if I skip over things that you might be interested in. Please stop me if you have questions. But I'll just try and provide a quick synopsis of the project, if that's okay.
And and excuse me, Rob, I didn't mean to interrupt. Besides a quick synopsis of the project, either you or your engineer, perhaps could just go over. Besides the land development approval, there are several waivers that are required within the approval. I want to make sure you address each of those to the board as well aware that they not only have to make a motion approved, that's they chose to do, but also waive those requirements.
Happy to. Thanks, Mr. Kilkenny. As as was indicated by Mr. Hart, my clients are proposing repurposing the former Walmart and and Pep Boys building. The the exact building that was utilized for the vaccination clinic that was mentioned at the outset. We previously filed an application that went to the zoning hearing board. We we were seeking at that time a special exception to permit our specific use, which as you heard is an e-commerce retail fulfillment center. That application at the time was recommended for approval by the planning commission. And thereafter, the zoning hearing board in fact approved that, and I think that was by order dated January twelfth of this year. The project itself really, it simply consists of the repurposing of that existing building. In fact, we're actually proposing to demolish nearly thirty thousand square feet of that building, reducing it in size to just under a hundred thousand square feet. And then reconfiguring portions of the parking lot, as well as reconfiguring the location of the loading docks to better serve our use. And hopefully to dramatically reduce any impacts that have been felt over the years by the adjoining property owners. At the outset, we're really looking at the physical portion of this project. We thought it was possibly going to be a waiver of the former land development process because it's really just a repurposing. And because the overall improvements were were of a minor nature. But once we got into it a bit with staff and in light of some of the interest that was shown in the project by some of our neighbors. And and the desire we had to to make improvements to the parking lot, to stormwater facilities, to landscaping. We agreed with staff and their assessment that filing a formal land development application was the appropriate route. So that ends up bringing us here in front of you all tonight. Nonetheless, as I mentioned, since this is a repurposing of an existing facility. The scope of the improvements are somewhat minor, some somewhat less than you would see in a typical land development. Thus, our request for consideration of a waiver to allow a preliminary final approval this evening. We have appeared again before the planning commission on this portion of the application, that land development. We were there last week and as you heard from Mr. Hart, they unanimously recommended not only approval of the application and the associated. Requests for waivers and modifications, but also our request specifically for preliminary and final approval. At the outset, I have to point out that process is very important to us. Timing here is critical. We've got a tenant that is driving deadlines for us, and if we can't meet those deadlines, we're going to end up with a building that sits empty for for one retail cycle. But as I said, we've been we've been at this for a while. I don't want you to think that we are rushing through and trying to rush this past anybody. We've gone through two full rounds of review by the by your consultants. Those review letters, as I'm sure you've seen, are very clean. We believe that any remaining comments are relatively minor. They will comply. And we'll certainly be able to address them to your consultant's satisfaction. As Mr. Hart pointed out as well, we have worked with our neighbors, the Stewart's Keep Homeowners Association. We've developed a landscaping plan that they have not only signed off on, but we believe addresses their concerns. So I'm not sure if I can share my screen, if that's possible. Pull up a plan and really quickly walk you through that plan if I could.
Let's give us one minute. If 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 I can add for, while Mr. Lewis waits for the screen. On the on Mr. Lewis and and the applicants to their credit. They met numerous times with the neighbors surrounding the old Walmart property. They actually included Mr. Representative Bradford in those meetings. And they did. They did do a lot of work and I I think soothed a lot of and relieved a lot of fears of. You know, the unknown of what's going in there. And I think the the changes and the adapting. Plan that they put together really solves many, many and relieves many of the issues, just about every issue that was brought up. And I think it's it's it truly is a better plan with the work that's been done. So.
Great. Thank you. It's a wonderful way to segue into what we're proposing. On the screen now, you should see an aerial. I know everybody knows where this facility is. The former Walmart building and Pep Boys building. Near the Sweet Square Shopping Center adjacent to Waste Markets and so forth. What I'll pull up now is the existing conditions plan. As I mentioned, that the existing facility out there, the former Walmart and Pep Boys totaled about a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. That facility had loading docks all over the place, actually. Start with Pep Boys loaded more or less facing Germantown Pike along the side of the building. And as you, I'm sure, knew, had all of their auto repair garages, those large roll up doors. Facing directly out on the Germantown Pike as well. But Walmart loaded its facility on the direct opposite side, which ended up having all of that. Loading faced directly towards Stewart's Keep and any large tractor trailers that were accessing that. Came off of Swede downhill top and then backed in to those loading facilities. So obviously, some impacts to Stewart's Keep from the location of that facility. That facility, the Walmart and our property had access to Germantown Pike at the signalized intersection. Also had access to Swede by signalized intersection. And those two principal points of access were connected by a private road that is referred to as Hilltop Ave. As well as Mill Road, which kind of loops around the facility. In addition to all of that, there's one one other access point to Germantown Pike, which is a write out only. Providing a secondary means of egress really from the Pep Boys facility. As you can see, that the center, as you would probably have to call it, was served by a sea of asphalt. Six hundred and fifty six parking spaces in total out there today, as we know with the vacant building. The site is is in somewhat poor condition. The building is as well, sitting vacant. Our project, which I'll now pull up our zoning plan. Sorry about the busyness with all the notes and so forth. But our project, as I mentioned, starts by reducing that that building by nearly thirty thousand square feet. And that is by demolishing the entire former Pep Boys. So pulling the entire project back off of Germantown Pike by that thirty thousand square foot building. But importantly, also then relocating all the loading facilities, taking them away from the Stewart's Keep side of the building. And bringing them onto the Germantown Pike side, thus reducing any impacts from loading of those vehicles to those neighbors. We are generally going to maintain the same basic access points. Again, still a signalized access at Germantown Pike, signalized access at Swede. And off of our internal private road, Hilltop and Mill. Our employees and customers will be able to access the various parking facilities. Immediately off of Mill, you will see one of the entrances into an employee parking area. As and then as you proceed around the loop road, a secondary access there. The next access point is an egress for the vans as they are leaving the facility. So they can then depart either to the signalized access at Germantown or the signalized access at Swede, depending where they're delivering. To where the homeowners are that they're delivering their facilities. The retail storefront portion of the use is located facing towards Stewart's Keep. So the most outwardly retail portion of the use will be in that corner. And there's associated parking for that facility. And then the existing parking lot closest to Swede will remain, providing additional employee parking and a few additional overflow spaces. For vans that we don't, we don't anticipate being regularly used, but that those parking spaces were available. So they've been made to be able to accommodate that those vans. We are proposing one change to access and we have filed an application to Montgomery County Roads and Bridges. We are proposing to add a right in along Germantown Pike to that existing write out only access point. This is important for this facility because then it allows us to separate the larger tractor trailer traffic. From any of the customer or employee traffic. By having this access point in this manner, any tractor trailer trucks, which generally are coming in the overnight hours. Can enter the site directly off of Germantown Pike, proceed into our facility. Turn around as they need to and utilize any one of the five loading docks. When they're done, they can then head directly back out onto Germantown Pike, again, keeping them from needing to mingle in any way. With customer or employee traffic on on the site. We have a very extensive landscaping plan. And that not only to buffer and improve the buffers from how they exist today, but also to respond in 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 great. Amount, I think, in large part to some of the comments and concerns we heard the first time through the planning commission. And then, as my clients were meeting with the representatives of Stewart's Keep. There's an existing, obviously, very mature landscape buffer right along the property property line. So there was not much that could be done there. That's obviously going to remain, which is wonderful. But we are substantially increasing the landscaping throughout the site. As well as along the opposite side of Hilltop to provide just additional screening from the various components of this use. Important just kind of numbers that that kind of stick out when you look at the plan. I'll talk about this a little more in a moment with the waiver slash modification requests. We're, we are asking for a few modifications and waivers relative to landscaping. But what is important to note, we're not asking for waivers or modifications on quantities. In fact, we are exceeding or adding an additional more than two hundred trees to the site that exist out there today. And more than five hundred additional shrubs and other other plantings. So it's not a matter of quantities in our waiver requests and modifications. Rather, they're really locational. And the biggest component of all that is that rather than trying to put small, often unusable. Landscaping islands every fifteen parking spaces. We've tried to combine those into much larger green spaces, which allow for not only more robust plantings. But in all likelihood, those plantings survive much better than when they are in those small islands. They're not getting run over constantly, not getting plowed over by snow, things like that. Certainly helps us in our circulation patterns and things, but again, it does provide for a much more attractive and much more. We think practical and survivable landscaping plan for the future of this of this site. If I can, let me pull up, I do have, I believe, the requests for the waivers. And and as your solicitor indicated, I'll run through those. We have the first request for waiver has to do with some of the five foot radius curvatures internally in our site. One thing I didn't point out is that because we are trying to accommodate the small delivery vans, the sprinter vans. In this site, we and we're actually providing two hundred and eighty four of those spaces. Those spaces are slightly larger than than car spaces, not trying to squeeze them into typical passenger vehicle spaces. But what also comes along with that for our benefit and for everyone's, bless you. Is that we are providing slightly wider drive aisles. So you're not going to be seeing those vans trying to negotiate a twenty four foot wide drive aisle that you might see in an adjacent shopping center. We're actually widening those to about thirty feet. So this waiver request, modification request is having to do with the curvature of some of those. Areas within the parking lot to make sure that we can provide adequate circulation and parking spaces for our vehicles. The next waiver request, as I mentioned, this is getting into the landscaping provisions, section one seventy five nineteen E, one seventy five nineteen D twelve. Your, as I mentioned, your ordinance not only requires a parking or a landscaping island every fifteen parking spaces. But also one canopy tree in each of those islands. What we have proposed here, as I mentioned, are not providing those parking, those landscape islands every so many spaces. But rather trying to propose much larger, single, continuous green spaces, which allow for greater numbers of plantings. As I mentioned, we are planting, I think it's two hundred and eighteen additional trees is the final count. Well exceeding what would be required by strict compliance of the ordinance. So dramatic improvement over existing, also compliant in terms of numbers. But the waivers are really more in the form of modification for location on on the site. But the waivers are really more in the form of modification for location on, on the site. The third waiver request has to do with sidewalks. We do have significant sidewalks on site. We are making improvements to the pedestrian circulation throughout the site. Hilltop Ave technically is not a, a public road. It does have sidewalk. We are providing connections. But out of an abundance of caution, we have included the request for waiver to not provide additional sidewalk along Hilltop and Mill. There's existing public sidewalk along Swede and the sidewalk along Germantown Pike was actually one of the sources of discussion at the planning commission. Because that sidewalk is slightly undersized based on your current regulations. And what? Let me see if I can blow this up here and bring this up. So there is what we believe to be about four foot wide sidewalk along our frontage on Germantown Pike. It does not currently connect. There are two intervening properties that do not have sidewalk. And it, it also then connects to the Wise Markets, but I'll bring up a photo if I can. I think I have to stop share and reshare. If this works, there we go. Can you see that now? This is, these are view sheds. These are actually showing what some of our proposed landscaping will look like once it's installed. But what I'm trying to utilize this for is showing you the sidewalk out on Germantown Pike. So here's another view looking westbound on Germantown, showing a lot of the new plantings at that intersection. But with respect to the sidewalk, you can see the difficulties there. We've got a host of Pico power poles that not only are along the frontage there, but they are smack dab in the middle of those sidewalks. And the planning commission raised that as an issue, asking if there was anything that we could do to take a look at that and potentially try and improve it. I'm happy to report that since the planning commission meeting, we, we did take another look at it. And we do believe that what we can do is to provide bump outs so that particularly for ADA accessibility. So that if somebody needs that additional, the four feet of width, we will do some bump outs around those poles to make sure that you have a continuous width of four feet of sidewalk along that frontage. So that's just a little additional information on the, the requests with respect to sidewalk. Come back here. The again, we had, the next waiver request has to do with the amount of open space between the curb line in a parking area in the outside wall of the structure. This, this waiver request is because we are obviously utilizing existing building, have it existing curb lines. There are a number of locations where the parking lot does not meet that 12 feet minimum. So we request that waiver modification. We are utilizing signage and bollards to protect the building and to avoid any encroachments from vehicles to pedestrian facilities. Again, the, the remaining waiver requests are back to the landscaping concepts. And this is, as you'll note, 175 19E 2, 175 19E 3B and 175 22. And these are the planting island issues, the canopy trees within each of those planting islands. And then the, the buffer requirements along our property line. Again, we have dramatically exceeded the total count for required landscaping and are increasing the green space in the end of the day by about a third of an acre of additional green space is being added back to this already developed site. And it's just a matter of reconfiguring that green space in a way that's more effective than, than strict compliance with your ordinance might otherwise require. That's my general presentation. I know that was probably longer than, than you wanted. I will stop talking and merely say, we've got a host of, of members of our team here. I think we can answer any questions that you have. But before I bore you all to death, I'll just turn it back over to Madam Chair and try and answer any questions that, that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, before you go there, just one question, one thing I could do is I would like to, our township engineer Kelly Goff is on the call. I know under number 10 in the resolution. Ms. Goff, do you, I, I know you and Jim Sullivan have reviewed this and but just wanted to, if you have any comments on under 10, 10 in the resolution. You're with everything that is recommended there.
Yes, thank you. I, yes, I reviewed these plans and all the items that they have left. They, they will comply to the township's satisfaction, the exception of the waivers that they're requesting tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, I know you had discussed it and Jim's not on the call as well. So I thought it was, it was prudent to, to just talk to you if you had any.
So Madam Chair too, and I'm sure you'll do this already. Whenever you, if the board goes ahead and approves a resolution tonight, make sure the motion just reads if it's not said already. Motion to approve the resolution and all waivers, just so it's clear on the record.
Thank you. With that being said, any questions or comments from the board?
I have one question. Mr. Lewis, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned, you mentioned that at the current loading dock for Walmart, which is I guess the north end of the building. It will be retail. It's going to be increasing retail. What is that? What does that entail? I thought this was a fulfillment center.
Yeah, and, and sorry about that. We got into this a little bit when we were at the zoning hearing board with special exception. And so I didn't explain it. So this is a retail fulfillment center, but the tenant, which is public, which is Amazon, does have a, a staffed component that is more or less storefront in nature in that a customer can arrange to pick up their packages at the storefront location. It is in flux now, but Amazon has talked about that also being an available location for returns. And so that, that likely will, will provide that opportunity for customers rather than going to, like I think right now there's some other retail retailers that allow you to do the returns from, from Amazon to those retail locations. So there is a full fledged storefront retail component that will be located in that corner and will be open more or less typical business hours.
I just have one comment, Madam Chair, before, before we, anyone else goes on. There's been, there's been growing concern about traffic, that this is going to, this is, there's going to be an increase in traffic. I'd like to go on the record and say that I can't see this causing more traffic than if Walmart were busy.
Yeah, and, and to that point, I appreciate that. The, the traffic study, we did a full fledged traffic study and submitted that initially to the zoning hearing board. And John Witch, our traffic engineer is here and he will be able to provide the exact details. But you're, you're talking about a reduction of thousands of car, of vehicle trips from a fully operational, busy Walmart to what we are proposing here. So from its peak or to if, if big box retail were ever to succeed again, you would see a dramatic increase in traffic from that facility over what we are proposing.
Thank you.
And to that, one of the foliage that you've mentioned, add to that kind of noise reduction?
Absolutely. I mean, not only the single biggest noise reduction that we're able to accomplish was moving those loading facilities. Having lived unfortunately near facilities that have loading docks and things, the backup sirens usually being one of the worst things that anybody ever wants to hear. And I'm sure that our neighbors heard those from Walmart on a routine basis. That and then any refrigerated trucks that, that may or may not have come there. By relocating that all the way to the front, you now not only have the additional landscaping and vegetation that we're proposing, but you now effectively have 100,000 square foot building acting as your buffer between any of those loading facilities and, and our nearest residential neighbors. So.
Thank you for doing that, for talking to the residents and making sure they were heard and accounted for. I did have a question about the sidewalks on Germantown Pike. I might have missed that in your presentation, but I know Mr. Colvin, the planning commission had talked about that with you. And that's going to be refurbished or redone or repaved or.
So what we can commit to at the moment are two things. First and foremost is we're able to commit to making sure that we have a continuous area of four feet. Cause right now we don't have four feet of continuous sidewalk there. And if I can, I'll pull this back up here. The, along Germantown Pike, our sidewalk, can you see that?
Right.
Is interrupted by a series of Pico power poles that we have, we can't do anything about. And what we can do, which was part of the concern, and I know John's here, but part of the concern was that you now have to squeeze by and once you get snow, you know, and winter storms, things like that, you end up having not enough space, particularly for anybody that has accessibility issues to get past these areas. So we are going to commit to providing bump outs around all, each of those poles that will now allow four feet of continuous sidewalk all the way along our frontage. We are looking at it further and are happy to continue to look at it, but we, to see if we can do better than that. But our grade issue, and you can't really see it so well in this photo. I'll try and bring up another. You can, this photo shows it a little bit better. The steepness of the grade along that frontage presents a challenge to try and do anything more significant than those bump outs. But we're going to continue to look at it and, and we'll work with the township and seeing what we can do, particularly if we are ever, if we ever have an adjacent property owner that we can connect to, it would make sense to see what we can do in a larger project to try and improve that. But at this point, we can certainly commit to making sure we've got that four feet of width continuous along our frontage.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a question for Mr. Lewis. Could you put that diagram up again?
Absolutely. You want to see the plan for the?
The plan, yes.
All right, here we go.
Okay, we talked about and then go up, move up a little bit. The other, yeah. We, we talked about Mill Road and, and the Hilltop accessibility through the synchronized light intersection. What about up in the northeast corner there where behind the Wise's Market where there's, they, they load their, they have their, their loading dock. We talked about nothing about that access. Will your vans be coming in and out through that?
They will not. Our, our vans will be precluded from utilizing the access that goes directly to 202. So our vans, when they will not utilize that access. Obviously Wise Markets and the other members of that shopping center have cross access easements. So they can use Hilltop and Mill. But our vehicles will be directed to proceed to the traffic signals at Mill and Germantown or the signal at Hilltop and Swede and will not be permitted to utilize the rear access out to 202. Given, given our tenant, that tenant has dramatic control over their drivers. So if anybody violates that, they will be able to handle it directly with those drivers.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for explaining that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2833, 53, 55 Germantown Pike for the e-commerce fulfillment center and all the waivers included. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next on the agenda.
Am I up?
I don't know.
All right. It is. All right. Item J, resolution number 2834, 2640 Decal Pike Chick-fil-A. And I'll call on again our township manager, Bob Hart, to review that item.
Thank you, Vice Chair. As, as was just said, this, this particular project deals with Chick-fil-A at 2640 Decal Pike. Anyone that knows this particular area and this particular store does your business. One of my, one of my preferred lunch spots. But anyone that goes through there, especially in the last year, understands the, the volume of traffic going through the drive-throughs and definitely, definitely created a challenge. The pandemic made it even a bigger challenge to the, to the business they were, they were doing. So this project in front of you involves the addition of a second drive-through lane and a small building addition at the existing Chick-fil-A. The project receives zoning relief in January of this year to allow two drive-through lanes at a width of 10 feet. 12 feet is, is required. So the zoning hearing board allowed the reduction to 10 feet. And a reduction from 58 to 33 parking spaces and a minor increase in the allowable building coverage. So that's the relief they received from zoning hearing board. The plans have been reviewed by township's professional consultants and due to the minor nature of the project and our desire to get our chicken sandwiches in a quicker fashion. Planning Commission has recommended a waiver of land development. A resolution approving the waiver of land development has been prepared for your consideration this evening. Here to present, I guess a brief presentation, because this is a much more minor project, is Tyler Prime of Prime Tavel and his project team. So Mr. Prime, if you would like to, you know, briefly address this, but it seems like a, a much smaller project. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you actually stole some of my thunder. I think you got most of my key points on the record already. But as you said, my name's Tyler Prime with the firm of Priming Tavel. I'm having some trouble with my camera. I don't know what's going on. It keeps flickering off. So I'm on the phone. But as previously stated, we have obtained zoning approval for this project. It was December 4th hearing of last year ratified in January for the three variances previously listed. We have planning commission approval last week on April 21st. Essentially, we're just seeking a waiver of land development. I believe it was your engineer's April 5th letter. The waiver was recommended. Montgomery County Planning Commission also recommended the waiver approval. It's a pretty simple project. It's a proposed addition of about 400 square feet. We are upgrading and redesigning the internal kitchen structure, essentially modernizing the restaurant interior with the latest changed prototype. The dual drive-through lane combined with the kitchen upgrades essentially just eliminate stacking or should they eliminate, reduce stacking issues in the drive-through. The food's prepared faster, expedited out the windows faster. As everybody knows, you know, the COVID crisis of the last year plus have, you know, caught, kind of caused some behavioral changes in Chick-fil-A's customers, as well as many other retailers. This combined with the newest prototypes is a result of a lot of that finding. We've been through the draft resolution of approval. We can agree to the conditions in the approval. I do have Chris Riggel from Colliers Engineering. If, if there are questions, technical questions, but that's really the nuts and bolts of the project. Simple addition, kitchen renovation, adding that second drive-through, no additional seating inside, no real changes to what the customers will see. Really everything's behind the curve. So however you'd like to proceed, if you need more testimony, if you'd like to give a question, answer, anything like that. We're, we're here and we're happy to proceed as, as you please.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? I know that Planning Commission had asked for landscaping along, along the frontage for the, the double drive-through car headlights. Is that correct?
Yes, we, we can agree to that. It was some screening, I guess, car headlights screening. We looked at it on the plan with planning commission. We agreed to it. It's not a problem on our end.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve number 2834 for Decal Pike Chick-fil-A. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Supervisor DeSanto, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
My pleasure. I'm trying to do a Chick-fil-A joke, okay.
We caught it, we enjoyed it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, monthly expenditures. I'd like to call on Finance Director David Chris to, for an explanation on this item, please.
Thank you, Chair DePiero. In front of you tonight is, for your consideration, is affirmation of expenditures for the month. Actually, this is for the time period of March 24th, 2021 through April 26th, 2021. So we do these for, from the date of the last meeting through to the day before this meeting or the next meeting. And a little breakdown of, of the expenditures total of $1,1348.30 is a total of accounts payable, bills paid during that time period of $487,913.51. And for that same time period of March 24th through April 26th, our payroll total expenditures were $513,434.79. So together, they make up the total expenditures for your consideration for affirmation of, again, $1,1348.30. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have, otherwise staff is asking for your affirmation of those expenditures.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chris, any questions or comments from the board? Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Supervisor Cabanas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, other business?
Madam Chair, one thing. This month, we received the approval, the township reports for the first quarter for the Police Department, Public Safety, Finance, Public Works, Zoning, Code Enforcement, and Parks and Recreation. I'd like to make a motion to approve those reports.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto, second that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Any other business? Okay, being none, managers update, please, Mr. Hart?
I'll make this quick, Madam Chair. As the weather's turning, turning warm and sunny and spring is really in the air. I just wanted to, I know the board is well aware, but let our residents know that be on the lookout for our park upgrades, Mack Watson Park, Heroes Park, the camp, the complex at Stanbridge Street Park, there's a lot of, a lot of really cool things going on. We will, there's a tentative park dedications events scheduled for the 22nd of May. We will have more information on that as we get closer. But it's, it's going to be a really great spring and summer in East Norton Township and we're looking forward to seeing everyone out. Just one update for Ballard Wolf Park, which is at the, really the far end of our township. It has been closed for quite a while. I know one of our, one of our esteemed residents who was actually on, on the Zoom call meeting is, is someone who, who hikes through that park. We have had a tree company in there, that I think the second visit they're coming in there to really do a lot of upkeep, there's a lot of dead trees, there's a lot of damaged trees. It was really an unsafe area to hike and they are actively working on that. And we are meeting with them after their second full day in there to reevaluate and see where we go next with it. But we're trying to make it safe and, and, and pleasurable and, and something for the residents in that area to do their hiking and, and walks through. So stay tuned for more on that, and that, that's all I have.
Very exciting. Any, and just to add to this, next month, we are planning to have an in-person meeting, Mr. Hart?
That's our, that's our plan, and, and I'll say, we took a survey. As of this month, about 70% of the townships are still Zoom. But a large portion of that 70% are really looking, looking at May as a potential comeback. So if things keep going the way they're going, we would expect that to happen.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hart. Citizens to be heard, Mr. Chris, is there anybody?
Madam Chair, there are no citizens to be heard.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting and, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Supervisor Winder, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, guys, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Aye.